Good morning. Please join me in the flag salute and a moment of silence. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start this morning with an update on the 2007 Tulare County winter freeze. And Kristen Bennett.
Good morning, Kristen Bennett, County Administrative Office. This morning, we have several reports for you on the status of the winter freeze, and we're also asking you to reaffirm the declaration of the state of emergency. First up, Agricultural Commissioner Gary Conkle will provide a farm and crop report for you, and then Donnie Griffin, Human Services Director, co-chair of the task force, will present a report and members of the task force, and then we'd like to invite Supervisor Ashida to give an update on Washington.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Gary Conkle, the Ag Commissioner. Our office is at 4437 South West Vina in Tulare. Just to give you a quick flavor, some of this is old news. You've all seen now, last time I spoke to you, that very morning, we had a conference call to get a consensus of the industry and our inspector staff. We've now come up with an initial estimate that shows that of the naval oranges, for example, that were left on the tree, we expect that probably on the order of 75 percent of those will have been lost because of the freeze. Thirty percent of the naval oranges had been harvested prior to the freeze, so that'll give you kind of a flavor. If you add that up across the board for bilanchos, lemons, and that kind of thing, we're estimating now total losses for Tulare County and the citrus industry of $418 million, and I know you've all seen that figure. That's been provided to the legislature, to the state and federal government, both. We have, I always like to say that we have just over 50 packing houses, citrus packing houses, in Tulare County. And I sort of always say that vaguely, because at some point, you stop calling a facility a citrus packing house. We actually counted them up, and we have 57 of them, if you count even the smallest operations. Today, we have five of those houses that are operating full-time, full-schedule. We have 27 packing facilities, citrus packing facilities, that are operating in some fashion. And that means shorter number of hours, a reduced number of days during the week that we work. And we have 25 facilities that are closed. A lot of that represents consolidation. It's common for a packing facility to have two or three facilities, and when we have freezes like we had in December 90 and December 98, it was common for those to consolidate their operation and run what fruit they can through a single facility, so we're seeing some of that. The watchword is caution, and growers, packers are being extremely cautious. They're very slow right now. There is a genuine feeling to be, to err on the side of caution, so that we don't begin to flood the market with frozen fruit. The other thing that's happening, and you've all seen this, if you drive down the highway now, you'll see truck after truck after truck going to the juice plants. That won't last forever, and the juice plants now are getting backed up. And so, some growers, for example, that have an opportunity to pick the juice are seeing that they're rationed, they can only take a certain amount. We've had people that tried to get their fruit juiced and send it to Arizona. Arizona requires that even juice oranges be washed and waxed before they go there, so that's really not a good option for most people. But that'll kind of give you a quick and dirty synopsis of what's happening. Because of the caution, we're actually able to keep up with the demand for inspection right now, and we'll see how that comes out in the future. I've heard a couple of optimistic things. I talked with a pest control advisor this morning that was talking about having to resume doing some treatments for Korean, and you know, some time ago, we would have thought there'd be no fruit that'd make it to Korea. I talked to a grower yesterday in my office who had 10 acres of oranges that he thought probably could be exported, and I'm going, wow, that's great, you know, 10 acres of oranges. He said, yeah, I have 1,400 acres altogether. So that'll give you sort of a flavor of what it is. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but that's where we are.
Gary, do we have any idea yet about the quality of the trees, how the trees have held up?
You know, what we've heard is some of the very, very, very small trees, there's a very small acreage of grapefruit right across from my mother's place, some very small trees may be lost. I talked to a grower this morning that had some replants, and he had some very, very young trees. He thinks he'll have to replant those again. Well, I haven't heard reports of widespread tree losses, certainly nothing like we saw in December 90, so knock on wood, we hope that's the case. There will be some burn back of leaves and that kind of thing, but I would say there's cautious optimism about the state of the trees.
I have one quick question also. This $418 million, I'm wondering, that's in today's crop, the fruit that's on the trees, correct?
Yes.
That's not the trees, any other economic impacts, that's just?
That's just the crop.
The cost of the crop?
Yep. And we do that, we're required by an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the California Department of Food and Agriculture and the USDA. We use a five-year average for that crop. If you actually use FOBs that were really taking place, you get a higher number. If you talk to Citrus Mutual, they'll tell you that really, the loss is bigger than that, because in the value of today's crop, the crop that was on the trees prior to the freeze, they were doing, that was a very good year. And so, like I say, we're required to use a five-year average, which includes years that were not as good price-wise. But that's strictly the value of the crop.
Gary, it's my observation, as a grower in the Lindsay area, Strathmore, that this freeze was spotty. Appears to me that the Lindsay area probably fared better than most areas, and I think the Orange Cove area fared fairly well. And so, there are isolated pockets where not, well, did better than others, but there are areas that lost their total crops. There is nothing salvageable. So I know growers who are going to probably be able to save 50 percent or a little more, but there are places that they're totally wiped out.
Fair.
So when we talk about averages, the averages in the freeze damage to trees, you'll have areas south of Porterville that may have substantial tree damage, and areas north of Orange Cove that may have substantial tree damage, or west of the traditional growing areas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, for the record, my name is Donnie Griffin. I'm the deputy, I'm the Director of Human Services. I still got to practice it a little bit. I want to report to you that the number of people who refer to me as Donnie Who is on the decline as a result of my co-chairing, along with David Crawford, the Tulare County Freeze effort has been very great, and I'm going to give you a little brief report of what's been happening so far. Supervisor Ashida, Supervisor Ennis, you've attended some of the meetings, and I appreciate that, your support is greatly appreciated. But we have began to fill, we have filled all of the sub-chairs of those committees, and they will be meeting this afternoon at about, I think about 1:00 or 1:30, and then the full task force will be meeting, I think, at about 2:30, 2:00. And that will be meeting here. So the effort is rolling fairly significantly. I want you to know that I am buoyed by some very, very capable people. And one of them, I'd like to introduce to you right now, and it is Carolyn Rose, who is chairing this effort from a community-based perspective, and very, very capable. I've asked if she would just come up and say a word or two to you.
Good morning, members of the board. I think in a minute, someone else may be giving you some statistics about the kind of support and help that's going on in the community, but I just wanted to say a word or two to you, our leaders. You'll probably recognize, this is the beginning of something you will recognize, "To everything there is a season and a time to every purpose." And this is our third season of a devastating freeze, and therefore, it's our time again to work together to relieve human suffering and to save our economy for the future. And I just wanted to thank and commend you, the Board of Supervisors, for your leadership. It was quick, it was strong, and I know it's going to be sustained, that you'll be there leading us to the end of this situation. So thank you very much, and of course, thanks to all of the folks in the audience who are working on it, to your staff members, to other members of the community. Your task force is dedicated to doing its very best to help you and work with you. Thank you.
Secondly, I'd like to introduce a gentleman who, when I first came here, along with Jim Sullins, they just agreed to take me out to lunch and help me through a couple of hurdles that I needed to know and understand about the county, and that's Ernest Hernandez from United Way. Hernandez, did I get his name wrong?
It's okay.
It's okay.
Who's Ernest?
I haven't been called that since probably second grade, and my mother used to call me that.
When you were in trouble, that's what just happened to me.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your support. I think Carolyn hit it right on target. This is great, our voices have come together and doing great. Funds are beginning to roll in, and we appreciate all the support, and there are different efforts taking place in different parts of the county, and we appreciate that. We continue to have discussions with several foundations, and we hope that soon, they will actually be forwarding to us sizable contributions. As a matter of fact, I have a conference call later this morning with a couple of foundations who are ready to make amendments to the effort. I also want to make you aware of the fact that on Friday, the 9th, Univision will be conducting a fundraising event at the Mervyn's parking lot here in Visalia from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. This effort has been put together through the efforts of Lali Moreno and Rosalinda Evitia. They will be, Univision will be broadcasting live and encouraging people to come by and make contributions of food, clothing, money, and so forth. Also, Tulare County employees have stepped up, and they're being led by just a really awesome team from Health and Human Services Agency. They're conducting their own internal campaign among employees, and that's going to kick off, it's a week-long campaign that's kicking off Monday, and we really, really appreciate that. Probably in the next week or so, we will convene our allocations committee to begin actually allocating dollars out to the different organizations in the communities of Tulare County. Can I answer any questions? Great, well, thank you very much.
Don't leave yet, Ernest.
Okay.
Shelley Abashian from Fresno Area District, the Fresno Area District Director for Diana Feinstein is here to make a presentation.
On behalf of Senator Feinstein, Supervisors Ashida and Worthley had the pleasure of meeting with her last week, and she gave them this check for $1,000 to help in your relief, and helping those who are so much in need at this time. As I traveled the areas and along the coastal that have also been affected by the freeze, it's your agencies that are helping the most needed with dollars that other resources aren't available, so.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your work, and on behalf of Senator.
Ernest, please come back.
Not to be outdone.
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I present your chair.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
[applause]
I feel like I need to pull out my checkbook, but I left it at home. I just want to give you a little brief report of some of the information that's been flowing in. There's been a great deal of information that we are trying to bring together, and I'm going to ask David Crawford to join me in a minute to let you know what the Health and Human Services Agency Tulare Works Group has been doing, and the information that we've collected so far. What I know to date, and this information is coming from the committees, which will be reporting later in the day as they bring all this together, they're doing a fabulous job, by the way. We do know that to date, over 3,900 have received some sort of freeze service through the Employment Connection. We know that almost 1,300 applications for energy assistance have been processed in the Tulare County Employment Connection. That's at a cost of about $400,000 so far, is the figure that I have, and a total of 2,300 or 2,366 freeze relief-related unemployment claims have been filed. And we are developing all sorts of tracking systems, we're reaching back to some of the model of collecting information that we did, that was done, I should say, I wasn't here in the 98, 99 freeze, and so we're still getting a lot of data, and we're putting together sort of a template, if you will, of fact sheets, so that we'll have them and be able to distribute it to you and others on a demand basis, and we're putting that together as we speak. So what I want to tell you is that this effort, I believe we sort of got in front of this effort, thanks to the very, very vigorous response to this community and the folks that are coming together here, and that we will stay in front of it. And I'd like to ask David Crawford, who's the Deputy Director for Tulare Works, to share with you a little bit about how Tulare Works have collected information and what they know about the folks responding on this freeze effort.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. David Crawford, Deputy Director of Tulare Works Division, otherwise known as the Welfare So far, in our district offices and our outstation sites, we've taken applications from approximately 600 families for public assistance benefits. That would be the CalWorks Cash Aid Program, boot stamps, and Medi-Cal. Normally, this time of year, we take applications from about 3,500 families during January, February. So if we're adding those in, we're probably over 4,000 families during this time, where it's normally 3,500. So that's about a 17 percent increase in our workload. Most of the activity is occurring in the Porterville, Lindsay offices. Some increase in the Dinuba area, some smaller in the Tulare-Visalia offices. We do have a number of outstation sites that we can reach out to the community, they don't have to come into our district offices. So we've been working, we have staff co-located all of the One Stop Employment Connection offices, so that's Porterville, Visalia, Tulare, and Dinuba. We also have staff that are making weekly visits to the Woodville and Lanell labor camps. Also, we have staff that are going out to the communities of Terabilla, Strathmore. We have a staff co-located at the Woodlake Healthy Start on a full-time basis. We're co-locating with the CSAT staff in Orocy. We're activating a site or a staff at the Ivanhoe Family Healthcare Network, Pixly CSAT office, the Health Clinic in Early Mart. We also have staff that are going along with Foodlink's Nutrition on the Go program, so we're available there to take food stamp applications at all of their sites. In addition to the ones I mentioned, let's see, we have Farmersville, London, Delph Colony. So we're getting out there, we're also hooking up with the Proteus Mobile Van. They're going out to the communities of Poplar, Woodville, Early Mart, and Lindsay, and our staff will be available at the Mobile Van sites as well. So we're seeing a lot of activity. This is pretty typical of what we saw in the prior freezes. Any questions that I can answer for you? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, as a final note, I just want to let you know that my supervisor, John Davis, had suggested to me earlier that I needed to get out and actually see the freeze and see what's going on, and so David saddled up the pony, and we went out, and we went out to Cutler, Orocy, where we visited with Jose Cuvedo, and went out to Ivanhoe and met with Douglas Booker, city council person there, chatted with him about what was going on, went up to Woodlake, visited the WIC office and the Proteus office, and talked to them about what was happening, and then on to Lindsay and Exeter, and to Farmersville. Been chatting regularly with Lali Mahano, who's been instructing me and giving me some tips on folks to visit, so I wanted to let you know that this effort from our part is taking many dimensions, and we're trying to make sure that not only are we bringing people here, but we're going out and we're trying to make an effort to make sure that if access isn't getting to people where they are, that we are going to get that access to them. So at this point, I'll conclude my report and ask if there are any questions from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. I guess this is my part of the program. On January 28th, a group of us flew to Washington DC to lobby on the issue of freeze relief and water matters and other issues. The group was made up of myself, Supervisor Worthley, Eric Coim, Brian Haddix, Tulare County, excuse me, Tulare City Council member Carlton Jones, Lindsay Mayor Ed Murray, Lindsay Vice Mayor Pam Kimble, and Lindsay staff person Diane Bucheroff, and Porterville Mayor Cameron Hamilton. We started our meetings on Monday, January 29th. Over the course of three days, we had 18 meetings, and we had 14 of them directly related to the freeze relief. What was very informative and a very positive impression that I received from that trip was that our congressional delegation was working very closely with each other, and that's Republicans were working with Democrats. And what they did is they took the different aspects of the freeze relief, and they divided those functions out, so Devin Nunes' office was working on the social aspects of what we needed to, from the legislature, to address social issues. Another Boxer's office, Senator Boxer's office, was working on the farmer relief, so they divided everything up. So it was, when they came back together to write the legislation, it was a very quick and easy process. The one thing we were able to do, which I believe was very, very beneficial to our electives in Washington, was that we were able to meet with the different departments, the United States Department of Agriculture, FEMA, and other agencies, and we were able to find out what programs used to exist that addressed some of the issues for our people who work in the industry, in growers, and we were able to find out what legislation authorized those particular relief programs. Many of them have expired because of time, but we were at least able to pinpoint where the legislature could go back to and find the basic verbiage for new legislation. So it kind of focused everybody in the same direction. We were able to talk to people about rent and mortgage relief. It's a program which expired through FEMA, but at this point in time, it's our understanding that Senator Boxer is going to put that in the legislation for the freeze relief. Extended unemployment, the sometimes state of California, you have a period of time you can collect unemployment, and after that period of time, you're no longer eligible. So we're trying to resurrect a federal program that would extend unemployment. The reason this is extremely important to us in the citrus industry is that our, the people who work in the citrus industry are not migrant labor. They're residents. The citrus industry is an 11-month, it's an 11-month industry that we're packing. So our neighbors, the people we go to school with, we go to church with, they're residents, they are not migrants. So it's very important for us to keep our labor force intact in an area when we're going to need them again, starting in November, when we start harvest again. The one thing that we found through talking to our state representatives and from past experience, is the fact that it's not unemployment that is the major issue, it's underemployment. When packing houses this time of the year are normally packing 10 hours a day, six days a week, many of them had to cut their hours back to maybe four hours a day for three to four days a week. Before, if you earned more than $25, you were ineligible to collect unemployment insurance from the state of California. Now, there is legislation going through that will up that limit to $200, so you'll be able to earn $200 and still be eligible for unemployment insurance payments. Addressing the farmer needs, we have a program that was used in 1990 called the TAP program. It was for tree assistance. In these freezes, in certain areas, you're going to have, you're going to get substantial tree damage, which affects the crops for several years into the future. There may be areas after this freeze, especially in the lemon industry, that may be damaged for at least two to three years because of severe dieback. Lemon trees are highly susceptible to frost damage. You may have young trees, which were just planted, that will, virtually, they will die on you. So the TAP program was set up to help farmers be reimbursed for these expenses. I remember in 1990, we were also reimbursed for pruning, because some of these trees will require severe pruning, and the TAP program provided funds back to the growers for pruning. So that will also be added into the freeze relief bill. Senator Boxer is taking the lead role in this freeze relief. And again, I want to say it's very heartwarming to see that this is a nonpartisan effort by our electives in Washington DC. There was, I would also like to mention not only Washington DC, but is from our committee report from the freeze relief, we are very well-prepared this time. Unfortunately, we've had recent history of addressing a freeze disaster. We've had three freezes in the last 17, 18 years. As a grower, to me, these freezes, each one of them, were something that we would experience every 50 years. But as fate has had it, we've experienced three of these within 20 years. So we are very well-positioned to provide a lot of this relief, and Tulare County is in a position to centralize this relief, which makes it a lot less confusing for the people, I believe, who are going to receive the relief. Our governor's office has been very responsive, and they are very well-prepared to deliver the aid that we need for our, for the people affected by this freeze. Probably the easiest part about us going back to Washington DC or talking to our electives in Sacramento is the fact that we're not educating them this time. There is enough institutional knowledge that they share that makes a lot of things a lot smoother, because we have been there, and this is our third time in 20 years. A question came up about my role as a grower and being on the Board of Supervisors, addressing and voting on freeze relief, a possible conflict of interest. So for an exercise- So for an exercise this morning, I took the total number of acres in Tulare County and the total number of acres my family farms, you know, I found out how insignificant I really am. And it worked out, it worked out to about .0023. So I'm like 2,000ths of the industry. So I don't believe there's going to be a conflict of interest. I'd like to open this up for comments from Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you. First, I would like to indicate how much I appreciated our chairman's leadership on this trip and it was very, very helpful that he was also a citrus grower and so could respond to questions that were raised about the industry and what it meant. And that was very helpful in a number of our meetings. Also, I wanted to thank the media, who had an interesting kind of a position in this. They were back with us covering events from our local media. And because of that, we found ourselves with a little bit more face-to-face time with some of our own elected officials and that was, and that was helpful to us and I so hope, hopefully it was of interest to the people back here. We were very fortunate to be able to meet with all of our elected officials, including our state, our US Senators, Senator Boxer and Senator Feinstein. And the press was able to come in and participate. And it was interesting to see the responses of folks. Diane Feinstein, when the press came in, really focused on something which I have to kind of aside about this, and that is you saw us today present a check for $5,000 from our good works funds, $1,000 from each district. But really what prompted that was when we met with Senator Feinstein's office and the press came in, obviously, we're there trying to figure out how to access federal dollars to assist us in Tulare County. Senator Feinstein said, this is a time for us to look internally also, that people need to step up to the plate and help out. And she was encouraging people, and I don't know if that got on the press, whether it got played here in Tulare County or not, but she was encouraging people to step up and give what they could give, whether it was $5 or $100 or $1,000, because this is going to take everybody's effort to help people who are going to be in need. And then she proceeded to write a check for $1,000 and give to us. Immediately, when I went upstairs, we got a call back to the county to make sure we give $1,000 each out of our general, our good works funds, which we did this morning. But, but I think her point was well taken. Too often, our immediate response is to look to the government and say, what can the government do to fix this problem? And I appreciate Senator Feinstein saying, you know, it's not just a government issue, it's a people issue. And we need to be able to reach in to our own pockets and to help our people, other folks who are in need at this time. So I thought that was a very, a very good meeting. And all of our meetings were excellent meetings. One of the things that I think that was alluded to, and I appreciated a very thorough report by the, by our chairman, but was the idea of accountability. Our freeze relief task force has developed an accountability and, you know, I know we all shudder when we read about things that happen, such as the problems in Louisiana and so forth, New Orleans, and money that was, more, people got money for more housing assistance than there were houses, you know, that kind of thing. And those sorts of things, you know, we wanted to reassure our legislators, money coming to Tulare County will be accounted for. And I very much appreciate Ernie and his organization because it's that kind of accountability which gives people confidence that as they give of their own money, or as the government gives of its own resources, these funds are going to go to the people who need them and it won't be the opportunities for double dipping and triple dipping and cheating the system, meaning there will always be people out there who will try to take advantage of things. But, but we really, I think, have an excellent system to limit or prevent that from happening. And so we wanted to assure our delegation, funds to Tulare County will be accounted for. All in all, it was a very good meeting, but it was good to have the city folks with us. They had their own take on issues because obviously many of them have the packing facilities in their, in their communities, they have the residents in their communities. And we had some, really some very interesting stories from Lindsay of the number of people who were showing up at their meetings, coming to the offices, trying to get relief. And so this truly is an issue that affects all of us. We may not realize that because if you don't live in Lindsay, you may not see that. But the fact is that we're all affected by this freeze. And so very much appreciate those who were able to go to the meeting and our opportunity to meet with our various elected officials and the various departments that we met with. Everybody was very helpful. The governor's office, as we said, was very much on top of this. As you know, the governor was in Dinuba the week before we left with several of his secretaries from his cabinet. And when we met back in Washington DC at the governor's office, they were right on top of things, they're very aggressive on this matter. And so I believe all, we're really working well together here. And I want to thank the freeze relief effort that's being done by the committee and the people who are involved in that, the various nonprofits and churches and individuals, because this is going to be a community effort and it's, it's working very well. Thank you.
Yes, you're nodding at me, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate your efforts, all of you that went back there. I know we've often heard about walking the halls of Congress and I'm sure that's exactly what you did because every TV clip that I saw, you guys were walking down one hall or another. So we know you're on focus and we know you're on point. I too, like you Supervisor Worthley, appreciative of Carolyn and Ernie and the community's work because I think we all work best when we work together and it's so encouraging. I expect that from our community, isn't that, I mean, it's just the way we are here. And so people step up and we've grown accustomed to that, but this kind of melding of the public and private sector in these times is very important. Last Friday, as we held the first meeting of the newly reformed California Partnership for the San Joaquin Valley, both of you were able to attend. Supervisor Sheehan to give some welcoming remarks and just an update. And with representatives from all eight counties, Secretary Bradshaw, of course, was there, Secretary Karamura, Secretary Crissman, as they're active participants, but they were able to give some feedback. They've been integral, I think, in this process, the help that they've been giving, especially Secretary Bradshaw, who has some funding that's available for this kind of help. So I just appreciate the efforts of every single person from this board, from those that went with you, from the community, and every person I see contributing their, their $5 or whatever they're doing, it's, it's very heartfelt and very much appreciated.
Just briefly, when our ag commissioner was giving his report, the reason I asked the question about the $418 million figure is that I hope people understand that that's the, the cost of that material only, the stuff that's hanging on the trees. This has the potential to have a great impact on our county. As you know, if every dollar that is generated in the county, this is just not a dollar, it's several dollars, it could be $3 to $5 because that money bounces around in the community by way of rent, money spent at grocery stores and so forth. So this has the potential to be, I think, close to a $2 billion impact to the county of Tulare. So it's, as you look at the cost of the fruit that's been lost, it's, it's very severe and, and, but the, the big picture is that this has the capability of, to reach out and touch everybody in the county, just not farm workers or those that were picking the fruit or those that are packing the fruit, but furniture store owners, your restaurant owners, everyone that provides services to those people can and probably will be affected too. So I'm appreciative of the work the delegation did in going out and trying to get some assistance back here because this will impact every one of us. It'll, I'm sure it'll impact myself as a contractor. Supervisor Sheehan, you have a .0023, mine's probably a .000123. But it will affect every one of us in the county that has the potential to do that. So thank you for the time and efforts that you spent back in Washington DC on our behalf.
I would also like to echo what Phil said. You know, being a businessman for 35 years in the Porterville area, I've been through two of these freezes and it is a real devastation to the community, especially Porterville. We are a citrus community and it's going to be tough on everybody. So I want to thank all the nonprofit organizations in the Porterville area and Lindsay and throughout that area, especially the churches too, have stepped up to the plate to help out. And I'm very pleased to also see the, the $200 that these farm labor people can get because we do definitely need them for the good fruit that's still out there. We, we need the workers. So it's been a real effort on the part of, of everybody in this and I'm very proud of the Freeze Task Force and what they've done too. Thank you.
Chairman, just one last thing. And I, we tried to, we tried to really emphasize this while we were back in Washington, but it's important, I think, to, to restate here because oftentimes when you have an event, people think of it as, okay, I gave my $10 and move on. This is an issue that will be with us for many months and that is something which is a little different than some emergencies. This is not an emergency that happens today and then tomorrow we start turning things around. These folks who are in this industry will probably be unemployed until next November or underemployed until next November. That means, as Mr. Cox indicated, the impacts to our economy will go on through the rest of this year, potentially could go into next year depending on what kind of damage is done to the trees. So just to keep in mind that this is not a sprint, this is going to be a marathon and that we really hope that people stay engaged in this process because it won't be, it won't be quick.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I just have one other quick question for both of you. I know you mentioned the Senators Feinstein and Boxer and greatly appreciate their help. And you mentioned the other delegation. I, I know you met with Congressman Nunes, Costa, Radanovich, did you get with Cardozo any?
No, we didn't get with Cardozo.
With their staffs? Okay. And, you know, I know that they're involved in this too, and I wondered if their participation, you know, the, the leadership role that they're taking, if that's, if you see future engagement with them or is there value to your meetings with them? I mean, what, was there any?
Well, I think it's very valuable that we had a chance to meet with them because past this freeze, it's about building relationships with your electives in Washington DC because a lot of the issues we have in Tulare County, their, their districts have the same issues. So it's a lot easier for us when we go back next month to walk into their office because of the results of the freeze relief brought us together and opened those doors. So it's very valuable to meet with all the valley delegation.
One of the things we did because of the number of meetings we had and, and of course, it was a very fluid time, meetings were being rescheduled and so instead of just being on one side of the, you know, the House side, we were going back and forth between the House and the Senate. And we, we actually had to split up at certain times. Unfortunately, our delegation was of a size we could do that, where some would go to one meeting, one, some of us would go to others. And that, that allowed us to be able to meet with more people and be more flexible and with their schedules than our own. So I, I know that there is a benefit to meeting with, we've known that in the past. The face-to-face meeting with even your own delegation in Washington has a value that's different than meeting with them here in, in their own districts. And there's a sense of, you made an effort to come back here, I'll make an extra effort to assist you in what's important to you. And so those are valuable meetings, you cannot underestimate the value of those meetings. So I'm very glad that we were able to do so.
Thank you, I didn't mean to.
I'd like to expand on something that Supervisor Worthley talked about was, and that is accountability. We've had the Katrina disaster, as we all know, and we've had other farm disasters throughout the country. And Congress and the administration is very aware of accountability. Part of that accountability will be that there is still a lot of work to be done in the citrus business. And will we have workers willing to do that work? Is public assistance sometimes a hindrance to, to the workforce? So they're going to be monitoring the results of us next year or even next week, if we can't find labor, because everybody's on public assistance. I don't think it's going to be more, I do believe it's going to be more difficult to get public assistance when these disasters arise again. And the one thing that, that the city of Lindsay was really pushing for was Public Works Program. When people, a mass of people are unemployed, it creates other issues, it creates a lot of socialist issues, it creates mental health issues, it creates law enforcement issues because people are not satisfied just to sit home receiving a check. So Lindsay was proposing to put these people to work, take some federal funds, state funds, and put them to work on deferred projects that were in the city of Lindsay. And I think I heard on the radio today, they're ready to hire 200 people if they can find the funds, just to do park work or deferred maintenance that hasn't been done for a lot of years. Well, apparently, this is catching on. It's catching on on the state level and it's catching on on the federal level. It's a lot better to have people working than sitting at home collecting checks for unemployment because of the social issues. The other issue is that it, it really affects the grocery stores and other people when we keep providing food. It has a dam, it has a reverse effect upon certain industries when you just provide food stuff to where people who normally have the opportunity to buy food, which helps the economy. So they're, they're looking very seriously at a public works type of relief program. So that effort has caught on and I think it has a lot of merit for future disasters, not only our freeze disaster. But the proof's going to be in the pudding. Will we have workers? Then we need workers. And I hope we do have workers. I'm very confident that we will, but we'll see. Before I leave the subject, I want everyone to understand, our group, our task force that went back to Washington DC was originally scheduled before the freeze. We were there to talk about the mitigation of the loss of surface water from the San Joaquin River Settlement. And we had several meetings on that and it was very successful. And it was really successful because we had the cities represented and it took a different, our electives in Washington DC took a different attitude toward the settlement because it affects every resident in Tulare County or in the service area of the, of the water users. It's not a farmer and environmentalist issue, it affects every one of us. So we were able to, to move the light off of the farmer environmental struggle to water quality of all the residents in the service area of the水源 water authority. So with that...
Just one last thing, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to mention, I had forgotten her name, but the governor's office effort is being led by Leanne Lenty in, in Washington DC. And just wanted to just say a word that she's an excellent person, very much on top of this issue and appreciate very much her, her efforts on our behalf.
Right, yes. Please, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you guys have covered it all so well and Supervisor Worthley just tagged up with the mentioning of Leanne Lenty. And, and that made me think that, as you recall, at the end of our last meeting we had at USDA, we were in the conference room right off of the secretary's office and we had just met with the deputy undersecretary. And as every, as all the dignitaries, the Washington folks exited out of the building, out of the room, and we sat around the conference table, we came to realize that with the efforts of the Tulare County supervisors and the representatives from Porterville and Tulare and Lindsay, that this group had, was, was actually in the lead, had met with more agencies and more elected officials on Capitol Hill than anybody else and, and became very incumbent on, on the group to look into itself and craft a solution. And after, after that was done, we then tagged back up with Leanne Lenty in the governor's office to make sure that we were in lockstep with where the governor's administration was going. And it was quite pleasing to see that the next declaration that came out from the governor's office included a number of the very measures that your board and the city council representatives had discovered in meetings with departments and had shared with elected officials and with the governor's office. So it's great to see fruit of your efforts come back so quickly with more, I'm sure to come. And also, it was good to see that the governor's ag secretary and labor secretary have tagged up closely with your board to make sure that we all stay on the same page. It's, freezes are crises, but to see things move with this level of teamwork and a sense of keep your eye on the goal... keep your eye on the goal, it's very refreshing.
I think I want to conclude with, on the report, is the reason that all of these different facets of this relief need to come together quickly is that our electives plan to put this on a trailer bill for the Iraqi-Afghanistan war appropriations, which will be coming before the Senate and the House, and I imagine within two weeks. So it was very timely that we were there, and that's why we feel a little confident we get it attached to the appropriations bill, that we're going to be able to see that, the freeze relief quicker than we've seen in the past. Okay. Moving on to our...
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to take a motion, an action to reaffirm the Declaration of State Emergency, and I would so move second.
Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we can move on. Move on to the consent calendar. There's two changes I'd like to make. It's on Item 7, this contract will be retroactive to October 1st, 2006. And Item 10, this contract will be subject to council approval.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other items, I would move approval of the consent calendar, Items 2 through 23, with the changes noted on Items 7 and 10.
Okay.
Second.
If the motion is seconded, please cast your vote. Vote is unanimous. Through the consent calendar. Moving to untimed items. Moving to Item 24.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian Summers, our CEO's office is addressing this issue for you.
Good morning, Brian Summers, Senior Capital Projects Coordinator. I am pleased to present the Visalia Library Expansion and Renovation Project for your review and to request approval to bid the project. In June of 2002, the county of Tulare submitted and was subsequently awarded a grant from the California State Library in the amount of $3,426,131 for the expansion and remodel of the Visalia Library. The grant required a 35% local funding match. This was accomplished through a collaborative effort between the county, the city of Visalia, and the local donation spearheaded by the Tulare County Library Foundation. The project includes a complete renovation and conversion of the historic 1936 library into the new children's wing. The library administration will also occupy a portion of this space. Also included in the project is the addition of a new lobby and circulation area that will connect the 1936 building to the main library. And the final component of the project is a renovation and modernization of the main library to include handicap-accessible restroom upgrades, new carpet, the expansion of the computer lab, and an expanded young adult space. Construction is expected to be completed in 12 months, and the construction cost is estimated at $4.9 million and is budgeted in the Capital Projects Fund. As has been previously reported to your board, there have been several delays in the design phase of the project. Most notable were the Office of Library Construction's request to revise the building program, the temporary involvement of the state Historic Preservation Officer, and actual construction methods that were exposed during Phase 1 hazardous materials abatement. These items alone amounted to a two-year delay of design. And with that said, I am happy to report that the final bid documents have been approved by the Office of Library Construction. Design is complete, and the project is ready to bid. A negative declaration has been filed with the State Clearing House fulfilling California Environmental Quality Act requirements. And at this time, I would like to introduce County Librarian Brian Lewis, who will take us through a PowerPoint presentation of the project. Brian?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I guess I need that. This may take a second to load, if I can, because the program is very graphic-intensive. Oh, came up a lot quicker than it worked. What you're looking at, and you've seen some of these graphics already, but today I'm going to put it more in perspective for you so you have an idea of what you're actually viewing. This is a current shot of the 1936 Visalia, old Visalia Library. You can see the fence around the area. That was put up during the first hazardous material mitigation. You can see the windows boarded up, and you can see some gray area around the windows. That's where they had to sandblast the lead laden paint off the building so that they can work on it. This is the new library site plan. There's basically three areas like Mr. Summers mentioned. There's the 1976 building that we're currently using for library services. Come on, baby, there we go. There's the 1936 old Visalia Library. That will mainly be the children's library plus some admin. And right in the middle, there's some new construction, and that's about a 2,000-square-foot lobby that's being added. Our first slide shows you a rendering of the old 1936 building from the corner of Oak and Locust. And what you're looking at is the old entrance to the city library, and that's the new children's courtyard that will be used for programming purposes when the weather's nice, but not without adult supervision. This is a view from about the same area of our eastern or our Locust entrance. The architect has some very beautiful pergulas that will have plants on them, and it's a very nice inviting entrance to the library. Right now, you don't even know where the entrance to the library is, it's kind of hidden. And with the rework of all the sidewalks, we think this will be very effective in bringing more traffic into us. This is the main floor of the current library. To put it in perspective, on your lower left-hand corner, you see the parallel lines. Those indicate the pergulas that are the two entrances off of Encina and off of Locust Now, looking from the Encina entrance, you're looking through the new lobby area into the current 1976 library building. The little golden railway to the right is at the start of the entrance to the children's area, and straight ahead will be where our new reference desk area, our reference service area will be. Going back to the main plan, but now looking basically southeast from the circulation desk into the new children's wing, you'll see that we have eye contact, visual contact with the children's desk you can see in the background. And you can see the beautiful woodwork that's going up on the ceiling that will match the historic woodwork in the building. This is the children's wing, which is the 36 building. Looking from the rotunda area back north, we're looking into the new lobby or the circulation area. Again, that's the same woodwork and lighting. There's the computers on the left, and the door on the left is our new homework center. Again, the children's building, but this time looking from the nonfiction wing, I believe, through the children's circulation area or reference area into the circulation or the new lobby area. If you look above on the top, that's the old copula area, and that's the just really gorgeous woodwork. So that's what we're doing. It's been a long time coming for us. I was a much younger man when this started. I lost a number of years, and like John Wayne said in Big Jake, in their years I couldn't afford to lose, but we're very excited about it, and it's going to be great for the entire county community.
Thank you. Any questions?
Chairman, I, one thing I wanted to, I appreciate very much the update, and I know it's been a long time coming, and I know that you've had contacts with various members about when's this project going to come, get completed, and it's, that's one of the dangers of term limits, you know? If you don't hang around a while, you don't see anything happening. It's nice to, as I start my third term, this one of those projects that began early in my career as a supervisor, and I'm going to be around hopefully to see completion. The one thing I was going to say is that, you know, I made a comment to you, Brian, one time when I called you. The park on which our library is situated has a name. The name of the park is Tipton Lindsay Park. Tipton Lindsay was an early attorney in Tulare County, was also a member of the Board of Supervisors, a well-known individual. And I was just thinking, while we're in the process of doing this, and I'm sure there'll be some times to put plaques and so forth up related to the project, it might be nice to make reference to Tipton Lindsay Park as being where we are. I mean, and I appreciate also the fact, and it's very fortunate, usually when we look at old buildings like this, they would have been demolished to build a new building. In this case, the fact that it was left there all these years, I'm sure it had its downside because of dealing with costs and so forth. But the upside is, we have a pretty beautiful structural building that will, looks like meld very nicely into our newer building, and I think it's a great project, one we'll be very proud of, be a real benefit to our county and certainly to the community of Visalia. So I want to thank you all for hard work, persistence, continuing down the path, and not giving up, and we're going to see the fruits of our labor.
Thank you, Supervisor. Half of that property is the city of Visalia, so we'll work with them at getting a plaque with the name of the park. It's an excellent idea.
I would suggest contacting the clappers.
Oh, yeah, they'll pay for it.
Good idea, thank you, Chairman.
If there are no further questions, I would ask your board to approve the construction documents and authorize staff to bid the project.
To the approval.
Second. The move is seconded for approval. All in favor, cast your ballot. I mean, just cast your ballot.
Thank you very much.
Vote is unanimous. Approval. Moving to Item 25, General Plan Amendment. Request for General Plan Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is George Finney, the County Resource Management Agency. I'll be presenting this item to the board this morning with the assistance of Chuck Shabelsky. Item number 25 is a request from Richard Garabedian for authorization to file a General Plan Amendment and rezoning on approximately 30 acres in the Kings River area. The property is located on the west side of Road 28, North Avenue 388, and is in locating proximity to the Kingsburg Gun Club and the old Kings River Park property. Property is currently in a vineyard. The request before you is to authorize a General Plan Amendment and application and rezoning that will change the general plan from agriculture to residential. Two planning policy documents apply to this particular area. You have a subregional plan, which is called the Kings River Plan, adopted in 1982. This is really the guiding plan document. It designates the site as agriculture, although it is in proximity to what was called an opportunity area along the Kings River. The second planning document is the Rivali Lands Plan. It also applies to this area. We get a preliminary point count, and it gets 23 points, which, as you know, is prevent the property from being rezoned under that plan. In analyzing this case, without going into too much detail in the staff report, staff concluded that there are two possible approaches to be investigated if the application is allowed to proceed, both of which would be more than simple plan or map changes. It would also involve some text changes and policy issues. The first one would be to designate the site as residential in the Kings River Plan. We would point out to you, however, that the areas shown for residential in the Kings River Plan are fairly restrictive. They were only allowed for areas that were infill or expansion of existing residential areas. This particular site does not qualify for either of those considerations. The second possible approach would be to expand a quarter-mile opportunity area. I don't know if you have a map that shows that, Chuck?
Dot a green line right here.
This is a quarter-mile radius along the Kings River within which properties, if they meet certain criteria, could be considered for residential or recreational uses oriented to the river. However, in reviewing the application, even if that opportunity area was expanded to include the area, it would not meet three of the four criteria for development. So again, it's not a simple straightforward map amendment approach that would be involved. You also have, I believe in your packet, correspondents from the Kings River Gun Club, and I believe it's Hammer Time Company expressing their concerns regarding the proposal and in opposition to any residential development in the area. And finally, as noted in the report, we've outlined three options for the board to consider. Briefly, one would not allow the General Plan Amendment to go to the next step. Basically, it would create a major precedent for deviating from Rivali Lands Plan. The second option would be allow the General Plan Amendment to proceed along the lines as I've suggested. And the third option would be a place to request on hold for consideration for future review and update of the Kings River Plan. It's likely the Kings River Plan will be reviewed after the, scheduled for review after the General Plan update is adopted, because we'll have to review all the community plans for consistency with that document at some point in time. That concludes my staff report unless there's any questions.
If you have one quick question for me, on the front page report, I'm going to need a 30-second education here. So the soil type for the site is Yedam Sandyloom on a Class II soil with a story index of 90-plus. I just have a big old question mark and a circle around that. Can you give me a 30-second explanation of what that means?
Well, most of all, the soil type, of course, that's just the type of soil. It's mapped by soil conservation people, then the county soils map. The Class II soil means that it's a prime soil, the land capability classification system, also developed by soil scientists. And the story index rating is another way of rating the agricultural capability of a particular soil. Any rating more than 80 is considered prime. So this is prime agricultural.
And I noticed on the map that this property is surrounded on basically three sides by trees, so is this soil suitable for trees, row crops? Any?
Mostly, yes, vineyards and stuff.
Thank you. That's it.
Is there anyone here wanting to address this issue? Please come up and give your name and your address.
My name is Bill Hammerstrom. I'm with Hammer Time Company. Address is 3084 Avenue 390. I live near the proposed amendment here. I would just like this morning to reiterate and highlight some of the points that the letter we wrote to Steve Worthley, the chairman. Residential developments are most appropriate when they occur either within the city limits or within a city's sphere of influence. Piecemeal and leapfrog land development within unincorporated areas of the county on productive and prime farmland are basically irresponsible. Furthermore, it tends to increase the urban sprawl and places increased demand for infrastructure and support area growth, which lends itself to even more development. I, too, concur with the Resource Management Agency's findings, and if I may, I'd like to quote some of those findings as well. The proposed project does not further the goals, objectives, and policies of the existing Kings River area plan. The site's land use designation is agricultural and has been zoned AE 20 since 1977. Under the Kings River Plan, the site is not designated for urban-type development, and will be governed by the RVLP. The preliminary checklist from the RVLP determined the project's site cannot be considered for non-ag zoning. The project's site is currently in agricultural production, and there is no community sewer The project's site is currently in agricultural production, and there is no community sewer or water systems nearby. Though the site is in proximity to the Kings River Development, Subarea A, and the opportunity areas, the project is not within the quarter-mile opportunity area or designated for urban development in the plan.
We do have copies of all this.
Okay, I understand. My basic point is, based on these and other considerations, we strongly urge your board to deny Mr. Garabedian's request for this General Plan Amendment. We have a lifestyle out there in this area, and Mr. Cox just was talking about the soil type out there. This is a soil type that you can't find anywhere, and if we wind up putting concrete and asphalt over this type of soil, and it keeps going on and on, basically where are we going to farm? Tulare County agricultural is the thriving factor of this county and of the state, and to be taking prime ag land out of use, not only affects the lifestyle we farm and the people that farm around us, but lifestyles for future generations. So, thank you very much.
I'm Richard Garabedian. Me and my brothers owners of the property. First of all, I want to appreciate the board of supervisors hearing us today, and my wife, Ellie, is here also. There's two sides to every story. I want you to listen to what I have to say first before you make any rash decisions. We purchased the land in January of 1960, forty-seven years ago. My wife and I lived there from May 1963 to September 1975. We never put the land into this Williamson Act because my younger brother, my older brother, and I bought the land to sell for housing because of where it is located. We never were notified that the ranch had been put into a Kings River Plan in 1977, and that any landowner could have opted out of the plan at that time. We should have been notified by mail. At that time in 1977, my wife and I had just moved into our home on our ranch on Adams Avenue just outside of the town of Fowler, so I could take care of my younger brother, who after coming home from the service, was involved in an automobile accident and spent forty years in a wheelchair before dying in 2001. For fifteen years, I tried to find a buyer for the property for residential housing. On February 8, 2005, my brother and I sold the property to a home builder who has and is even now building in Fresno, Kings, and Turn County, but he had never built in Tulare County. But before going into escrow, he called the Tulare County Planning Commission and was told there would be no problem for him to build on the property. He got the okay from Beverly Aptos and others there. His name is Barry Bernstein. We went to Chicago Title in Reedley and started the escrow on February 8. My brother and I were very happy because we were up there in age, and this was our 401 retirement. Besides, the last few years, we have been losing money on the ranch because the vines are over one hundred years old, and the ranch has planted ten by twelve, the vines. Now, being a farmer, you understand what I mean, ten by twelve. There's only eleven thousand vines on the ranch, but it should have at least eighteen thousand vines. At my age of seventy-five, and my brother, he's seventy-nine, we're not going to dig them out and replant, wait three years, if we're lucky to live three years, and spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, when Barry went to get the permits, he was told he couldn't build because of this Kings River Act preserve that we knew nothing about. The ranch I live on by Fowler and the home ranch I was born on by Del Rey have been in the Williamson Act ever since it came out, but we never put this property in because we bought it to sell for housing. Barry and I met with Henry Hatch, George Feeney, and Chuck Puliski a number of times to settle this, and they told me we should see Mr. Steve Worthley, the supervisor. And we did so. My wife and I met with him, and he says that we should try to work within the system and come in front of the board, and here we are today. I have two friends that are lawyers in Fresno, and they told me that since we have owned the property since January 1960, and that the Kings River Act plan didn't happen until 1977, that our property is grandfathered in and that Tulare County would have to let the escrow take place or had to buy the property themselves. I thought it would be much better to work within Tulare County instead of getting involved with attorneys. I got drafted into the Army into the Corian War to protect our system of free enterprise, and what is taking place here seems more like communism to me. We have owned the land for forty-seven years, paid the higher taxes, keeping it out of the Williamson Act, and have my buyer on the property fell through. This really is sad because I'm not no kid anymore. The back part of our property is at least one-half mile from the Kingsburg Gun Club house, and not a but, as stated in the letter by the Hammerstomps, who by the way, are newcomers to the area. Only being here several years when they bought Robert Peterson's twenty acres, Robin kept his house, one acre and yard, and the Hammerstomps built a new home a little over thirty acres away on Avenue 390. And we as neighbors never gave them any trouble when their parcel was less than twenty acres, so a new home, according to the new plan, was not legal to build. We didn't say anything to them. Sooner or later, all of this land, mine and the Joneses' family are my good neighbors, and some of our other neighbors, is all going to be into housing because of its location to the freeway, Kingsburg Golf Course, the river, and the city of Kingsburg. Over the years, we have had all kinds of offers to sell one acre or more from people to build a home. Barry Bernstein was going to build one million dollar homes with three-car garages, so it was going to be a win-win situation for Tulare County, and newer and higher taxes, besides employment for construction workers. All of this property is high ground, and homeowners here will never have to worry about being flooded out. I still remember some forty years ago where many of the homes around the golf course had watered them, opposed to being on low ground. Right now, housing is on the downside, and I don't know how many years it's going to take me to find another buyer to build the same type of housing. But I would like it to be during my lifetime. That's why we gave the money needed to be here today and ask for your blessings on this future project. Also, this would also help Tulare County, who owns eighty-five acres between me and the river, being developed in some worthwhile project. It's been sitting there for a number of years. There's eighty-five acres down there between my place, there's five acres between me, the Joneses' own, and then the lowland starts, and Tulare County has this eighty-five acres down there, and it goes all the way up to where the gun club, they do their shooting. And it's been sitting there a number of years, just sitting and sitting and sitting. So this would be worthwhile for Tulare County and the Tulare County taxpayers also, and would wish you would consider all these things. Now here, I made these out over a year ago when I thought that we were going to come in front of the supervisors at that time. It's points to consider before you make any rash decisions. But I don't believe that any progress would ever take place if somebody has something a mile away or a half mile away and nobody can build. Well, then everything would just come to a complete standstill. I mean, we've been there forty-seven years. The Hammerstomps just came several years ago, built a house over thirty acres away, and they're complaining? I'm very surprised as a neighbor, they even came here today to even express their thoughts like that. Now, the Joneses own most of the land around me and all the way around by the river and everything else, and he has children and grandchildren, and I'm sure that someday he would want to sell his property too. I mean, he just doesn't want to farm all the time. Farming is getting harder and harder all the time with the labor, and we're just lucky if we don't get froze out on our vines now, with no moisture in the ground right now. Citrus is bad enough, but if it doesn't rain pretty soon and we don't get the dew point up, we're going to have trouble with our vineyards also. Well, I want you to consider all those points. I don't want you to make a rash decision. But I would like you to say it's okay if we could build on it, give us a zoning change. Had we known in 1977 that we could have opted out, we would have opted out. We were there way before. We were grandfathered in. But that's all I have to say. Ellie, do you have anything to say, honey? No, one other thing. We met many, many times with the Planning Commission Director, Henry Hatch, George Feeney, and Chuck here. Very nice people, and they weren't against it. If they had been against it, I wouldn't have put up the thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars to be here in front of you today. And sooner or later, that's all going to be homes because it's a terrific area to live. And the only reason I moved is my brother was in a wheelchair, and I had to take care of him for forty and a half years till he passed away, and I had to get closer. Otherwise, I would have just stayed right there because it's a wonderful place to live.
Mr. Garabedian, if you have something to give to the clerk, if you...
I will. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's your role, by the way, but this points to ponder, so please don't make a rash decision, okay? Thank you.
My name is Betsy Tunnel, 38550, Road 16, Kingsburg, California. I'm also affiliated with the Kings River Conservation Committee, but I'm not here today on behalf of them because I just found out about this agenda item yesterday, and I wasn't able to call a meeting one day and have everyone get together. So I'm here on behalf of myself today. As you know, I have studied the Kings River Plan, and in 1982, I'd just like to read five names. Clyde Gould, District One.
Could you sum that up, consider?
All right. We would like to urge you to be consistent with the Kings River Plan in what they saw as vision at that time for land use planning along the river, and also be consistent with your goals of the current general plan, not compromising agriculture in this valley. And therefore, I, as an individual, would like to urge you to not allow this to continue because it isn't something that is going to be beneficial in the long term for the most people. It will be beneficial to Mr. Garabedian, which I totally see his point of view. However, the tax dollars will not come to Tulare County, they'll go to Kingsburg for shopping and other places, and there will be additional need of resources for that kind of density too far away from unincorporated cities and other cities. Thank you very much.
Good morning Supervisors. My name is Kathleen Satome Omachi, 759 F Street, Reedley. I'm here today on behalf of El Rio Reyes Conservation Trust. We would like to bring to your attention, and we believe that the working, further working between your board, your staff, and the applicant will be needed for a full discussion of the accountability on this project and of the county of Tulare. The two issues are the state concern for levies, and in particular, they've talked about the Kings River, and the federal government on FEMA on the development of properties, commercial and residential, within the hundred-year flood plane. Presently, they are looking at the San Joaquin. From my understanding yesterday, it will be extended to the Kings River. We believe that property owners, farmers, citizens of any area within our county really do need to have a progressive life. We do need to work together, and that's what we would strongly suggest, because all of us are at the mercy of the weather, as you have discussed earlier. We cannot control the freezes, the droughts, or the floods. However, one issue on the Kings River that just came up this year that was not at a flood stage is that you did have a residential development that abutted the river, and they had to sandbag. Because as you know, the currents of the river, it's not the topping out of a flood as they saw in New Orleans sadly, but the water action on the side of any bank or on the base of any levee, that is what eats away at the kind of barrier that we've established to protect our farmland and residential areas. You had a very small indication of that when you had a piece of residential area that needed to sandbag, or they started to lose their footing underneath their trailer homes. But again, it is an issue of prime farmland, it is an issue of property owner rights, there is an issue of the county being faced right now with economic decisions with the freeze and what will be affecting the communities for the next year. But there are other sources of funds possibly that we, as the El Rio Reyes Land Trust, could assist you in meeting with several of the national organizations if you did wish to look at this in preserving it in farmland or as a park, but it would also be as a financial benefit for the current property owner. Once again, we would ask that you would not make, give approval of this application today, but take it under the long-term consideration, not long-term, because as he said, he's getting older, but that it would be a full discussion, which would benefit Tulare County, the property owners, and basically the health and safety of our communities. Thank you. We will be drafting a letter for your consideration. Thank you.
I'd like to bring this back to the board at this time.
Chairman, if I might begin, and I encourage the comments from other board members, Tulare County has a process in place whereby General Plan Amendment requests come before the board of supervisors before they are processed. This is not, I guess, the case in all counties. People can just simply file an application for a General Plan Amendment and then go through the process. Tulare County determined that it was in the best interest of the county and of applicants to have this preliminary process so that people would not engage in something which was not going to happen. In other words, it would not be a waste of time, both on the part of the applicant and on the part of the county. We've had a number of these come before the boards since I've been on the board, and always it's been my position, and I think the board has generally gone with that, that if there was any possibility that a person's project could go forward under our existing rules, then it was my position, no matter that there might be many obstacles to it, that they'd be given the opportunity to do that. Because it's not the position of the board, I think, to say, no, you can't even try to go through this process. You ought to be given the opportunity to try to go through the process. There have been other occasions, and I believe unfortunately, this one falls in that one, where there is no, where there's no chance that something's going to succeed because of rules in place that we have said to the applicant, it's not worth your time and it's not worth our time to proceed with something which will not have any opportunity of success. And in this case, I've heard all the testimony from people, and believe me, Mr. Garabedian, this is not a rash decision, this is something based upon, I've given a lot of thought since we first met, and you brought this proposal to my position, to my attention, is that under the Rural Valley Lands Plan, we have what is considered an absolute bar to development unless you meet certain points. And this is a clear case where any kind of actively farmed property in Tulare County is not going to pass that bar. It just doesn't happen. If you're farming property in Tulare County, unless you're trying to farm property on a mountainside where you've got really poor soil quality or something of that nature, you're not going to be able to make the point system, which allows you to do anything of this property other than agricultural pursuits. And that, this property fits directly in that. And it doesn't matter whether it was in the Kings River study area or outside, because these rules apply to all of Tulare County. Any property that's zoned agricultural, for agricultural purposes, is subject to Rural Valley Lands Plan. So actually, in order for this to proceed, you would have to come in and seek a General Plan Amendment to modify the Rural Valley Lands Plan for this project to go forward. And that's not the application that's before us, and it's not really an appropriate thing to be on a per-project basis, because that's a, that is of interest throughout the county. This project, as you could see, opens up the Pandora's Box to every other piece of property that's zoned AE-20, AE-10, AE-40. It's agricultural property subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan. So in this case, I don't have to get the other issues about, you know, levies, whether it's within, whether it's inside or outside of flood zone areas. We don't get there because we can't get over this Rural Valley Lands Plan and the point formula that we have in place. And again, this does not just apply to your property, Mr. Garabedian, it applies to all agricultural property in Tulare County. And so this, I believe, is a clear case where there is no point in moving forward with this project until such time, or if there is a change in the rules of how we play the game in Tulare County.
May I have a right to address what you just said?
Well, I think it's time for the board to deliberate on this. I appreciate your comments that you had before.
I just have one thing to say. Between 1960 and 1977, I could have built anything I wanted, and there was no problem. I was told that. But in 1977, they came through with this Kings River deal, seventeen years after I already had the property. And that sure doesn't seem right to me, that in this country that could take place, that anybody could just say whatever they want. I could understand if I had bought the property after 1977. Yes, you're right, completely right. But anything prior to that, you should at least give consideration a little bit. And my land is high land. Forty years ago, I remember all those houses around the Kings River or the golf course, some were underwater. The water can't get to this property.
Thank you, sir.
There's no way. And what you're doing to me on this decision is going to affect my neighbor Joneses, my good neighbors, and everybody else who's lucky to sell their property for homes or commercial development. And how about Tulare County, the eighty-five acres they have down there? So please don't make rash decisions.
Again, my comments are not rashly made, they are based upon being on this board for eight years and having had experience with these things for some time. I understand you're... I understand your concern. Again, it applies to a lot of people who own property in Tulare County, even if we were to take what you're saying, the subset of people who owned property prior to the implementation of our general plan. Yes, my mother used to use your approach on her, on her property would be able to build a subdivision. No, she will not be able to because it applies to all people who own property in the ag, in the ag-owned property. And, you know, I don't believe there's any basis of a legal challenge to that, but I mean, it's clear we have, we live within the rules that we have adopted and we've had in place for many, many years. And there's no point in proceeding with a project that doesn't have a chance to see the light of day. And so this is the appropriate time for a denial of an application for a general plan amendment because there is no conceivable way that this project can go forward under the existing rules that we have in Tulare County.
May I ask one question? So I understand how the county works, and I appreciate that. I'm Ellie Garabedian. When we originally found out that there was notification in some very obscure newspaper that you could opt out of the plan, so this is my question, we didn't see that paper. We didn't get whatever it was, Porterville, or, we get the Fresno Bee even then, when we lived there. But if you could have opted out of the plan then...
It wouldn't have made a difference.
It wouldn't have made a difference?
Would not have made a difference. No, because, because what we've applied, this Rural Value Lands Plan formula applies to all ag property, not just the property that's within the Kings River study area. It applies to all of our ag property. So it would have made no difference.
But we were told, I think George Finney told us, that many people opted out. I guess they saw that notification. So they opted out of this plan and many other plans, I suppose. So that means even though they opted out, now they're still under the plan?
No, they would still be under our general plan. In other words, the county general plan has various components of it, which would include this particular plan. In other words, another way of looking at it would be, just as you, as you go through a process of development, you would have the general plan you have to deal with. Then if you were within a study, a different kind of a plan, you would also be subject to the rules and regulations concerning that particular plan. But in this case, you can't get past the original general plan, which applies to all ag property in Tulare County.
So what happened to the people who opted out?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I can, I think we're way beyond what is normally allowable here. I just have one quick comment. Mr. Garabedian said sooner or later, it's all going to be homes. I do not agree. It's not going to be homes. It's in the, surrounded by trees. It's not going to happen. So I would make the motion to deny the applicant at this time.
Well, I will second the motion. The only thing I was going to say is that you never say never because who's to say that the city limits of Kingsburg won't someday extend out to this area? But certainly, probably beyond our lifetimes, Phil. But I believe under the current rules that we have, there is no way this project will be able to see the light of day. Therefore, it makes no sense, and that's, I believe, the reason why the policy was put into place, that folks come before this board so they don't waste further time and energy. I mean, there's no point in going forward with a project which will not be able to change, would change, get what they want unless there's fundamental changes in our general plan and the Rural Value Lands Plan as applies to property throughout Tulare County.
There's been a motion and a second. I would like to add the comment. Never is a very strong word. And we have properties in the foothills that are, we have conservation easements, development easements on them now. And I strongly would suggest any group that's looking to preserve the Kings River, this is a prime piece of property that you need to look at on purchasing a development easement because someday, when maybe we're all gone from this board and maybe pushing daisies, that pressure's always going to be there. So I strongly recommend anybody with an interest in preserving the Kings River should talk to the Garabedians about purchasing a development easement. So with that, we have a motion and a second, and please cast your vote. Motion is to deny the request for a general plan amendment. And the motion is unanimously, unanimous denial. Thank you. Moving to the next item.
Item 26 on your agenda is another general plan initiation request. This one happens to be in the Poplar area, Poplar Cotton Center. The applicant is Michael Brown, and they're represented by Marge Ballsley of Schaefer and Associates, who is present. The property is about a 15-acre parcel containing a vineyard and a house and mobile home. The property is located within the urban development boundary of the Poplar Cotton Center area and is subject to the Poplar Cotton Center Community Plan. The request before you is a two-part request. First, a general plan amendment, which also consists of two parts. They were requesting a change from commercial to low-density residential on about five-and-a-half acres along the frontage of, what is that, Road 192? And then a second part is a change from rural residential to low-density residential on about nine-and-a-half acres on the interior portion. They've also requested a zone change, but as noted in the report, the zone change authorization isn't needed at this time because it's within an urban development boundary, and your interim policy wouldn't apply in this case. Here are the issues. Just to summarize, the property is inside urban development boundary. The nine-and-a-half acres that was, that was shown as rural residential was originally low-density residential when the original Poplar plan was adopted. That was changed in 1997 or 98 to rural residential at the request of the owners of Track 162. Can you point that out? That's that area there, a fairly large lot area, about 30,000 square foot lots. They requested, and the board agreed, to change the Poplar plan to establish a rural residential density in this area, not only for the track itself, but for a buffer area around the track to allow a transition in densities so you didn't have a higher-density housing backing up immediately to these three-quarter acre lots. So I just would like to point that out here, that this issue, if this general plan amendment is allowed to proceed, this issue will have to be reopened with the residents of the track. The second issue is the loss of commercial areas along Road 192. This is always an issue for these rural communities. Our community plans always try to designate a sufficient amount of commercially designated land so that you have services in the communities so that you don't have to have inordinate amounts of traffic going into the larger communities to receive services. So that issue would have to also be looked at. And then finally, I think we noted that when we were doing the research on this particular request, we discovered there was an inconsistency between plan and zoning. That needs to be corrected, so we would take care of that if this is authorized. Again, our recommendation is that you go ahead and authorize the applicant to file for the general plan amendment. We're doing that primarily on the basis of the general plan update, which encourages more efficient and higher-density land uses within urban development boundaries. We think the edge issues with Track 162 can be worked out, perhaps at a policy level within that process. And I would point out one other thing. There has been an interest in some of the residents of Track 162 in getting sewer services from the Poplar Community Services District. If this land is allowed to develop, that'd be one easier way to get the track lines moved up in that area. That's all I have.
Questions?
You said that this piece of land here, so I've got it up on my GAS, it's plopped right down between two residential subdivisions here, that it would, that it would be, that it would have sewer services available to it?
It doesn't have it right now, but it would have to provide sewer service. I think Marge Ballsley's probably already has some information on that. She's been talking to the district.
Okay.
Please identify yourself and give your...
Understood. Marge Ballsley, R.L. Schaefer and Associates, 2904 West Main Street, Visalia. We are the agents for the applicant in this project. The applicant acquired a will-serve letter from the Poplar Community Services District June 1st of last year. We have until June 1st of this year to pay the connection fees and commence development or our will-serve letter dies. We have the last 96-lot approval from the sewer district without major renovation to their sewer system. There are seven subdividers behind us waiting in line for those services should we not get this built. So we're in a hurry. The will-serve letter, as I said, is good until June of this year. I hope to be able to complete my, the staff report and everything and provide that to the county so that they can utilize that without wasting their time and be able to get this fast-tracked through the Planning Commission. The commercial across the frontage of the lot, I don't believe, is that significant in that all the commercial development or zoning that is along Road 192 is underutilized now. There are a lot of commercial buildings that have been converted to residential units, a lot of residences existing within that commercial. We'd just like to see this as an infill project and get the sewer services in there and get the subdivision done. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Marge, again, I mean, one of the things I appreciate about this process is that we're not really dealing with, we won't be deciding the project here today. We're going to give you, the question will not give you the opportunity to pursue the general plan amendment to do the project, and then that will come back for the Planning Commission. And a lot of these things will be worked out in that process. You know, in my own mind, the commercial thing, there's more to it than just what you say. You know, if you're going to put housing there and that becomes a major road, then you've got issues of safety and noise, and so do you have to put in a block wall or something along there for the housing? Those are issues that can be worked out, I believe, and will be worked out in the process.
And we have both a traffic survey and a noise survey being done right now.
But, but for our purposes today, it is whether or not, and again, going back to the comment I made earlier, this is clearly the kind of case, you're within the urban development boundary areas. Your project has every, you know, good opportunity and chance of being successful. And so our only goal here today is to see whether you meet that threshold, and I think obviously this project does.
Questions from the board? Any motion?
Motion to approve applicant to move forward to the GPA.
Moved and seconded. Please cast your ballot. The board unanimously approved the request for a general plan amendment. Moving to item 27, public comments. We have American Red Cross.
Basically, I'm going to make it short and sweet since we've been here a while. Basically, what I'm here to talk to you about is our Real Heroes Event that we're going to be having on March 28th. Basically, what it is, is we're going to be, we are currently accepting nominations for people that have done heroic acts, saving people's lives, coming to the aid of people. We currently have 16 nominations thus far, and we're hoping to get more because we have 12 categories. Our Hero Selection Committee, which is made up of about 19 community members in Kings and Tulare County, are going to be reviewing those in a few weeks. I've read through the stories. Some of them are amazing. It's to honor and salute a lot of the heroes within our communities that don't really feel that they actually are a hero, even they are because they have come to the aid of someone else. Also, too, is we're actively seeking sponsorships, table hosts, table sponsors, to help defray the costs of this event. Also, too, we're looking for donations also, too, because all of the monies that are donated are going to go to, directly to our local chapter, which we cover in Tulare and Kings County. I have some packets for you all if you'd like to take a look, so. And we're really excited also, too, because this is our first year ever doing it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other comment, public comments? Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Greg Gomez, and I live at 2920 East Stewart Avenue in Visalia. I come, I come before you because of the respect and admiration that I have for a fellow HHSA employee. His name is Mayne Coran. He, he was asked on Thursday to resign his position because this county chose not to sponsor his legal residency and so terminating his appointment with us. I just wanted to, you know, I'm just confused at why that happened, and, you know, he's a great worker, does what he's supposed to, does it above, does above what he's supposed to. And it's, for the past year, it's just been a pleasure to work with him. And I, I think he was owed at least, you know, an explanation as why his, his application was rejected. And that's out of respect for him that I'm here. And out of the 12 years that I've been with this county, I don't think I would do that for anyone but him. So thank you very much.
Any further public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to Board of Supervisor Matters. We'll start with Mr. Anis today.
I had the opportunity last Friday to go to the Porterville City Fire Station training area where they're testing for the new county fire department. And the day I was there, we had 90 applicants, and they had maybe 150, 160 total, but the quality, this was the physical training, the quality of these people was unbelievable. All of them from other agencies, other fire areas, different cities, some of them within the county cities, some without the county. But all these people, trained people, very capable people, and it really excited me about our new county fire department. I was very, very glad to be there and be a part of it. Thank you.
Did you participate by going to this...
In fact, they wanted me and you and Alan to go out there, and even Connie.
I think it was our CEO's office, and I said, "I have a spelling B2B and I can't be there," which was true. But also, I'm healthy today because of that. And I said enough, Mr. Chairman. I had nothing else to say.
But the word you wanted spelled was "no."
I would have gone Supervisor Anis, but I didn't want the rest of you guys to feel bad. I got in trouble when I first got here for climbing 65 feet up into the air. We had a new fire engine down in Early Mart, and I went down there, and the fireman dared me and put suited up, and I went. And by the time I got back to the office, Supervisor Maples was waiting for me to tell me that was totally unacceptable behavior. And what was I trying to do, make the rest of them climb the fire engine? So I declined.
I'm glad you did that. A couple things. A few years ago, I went out on a training exercise with the City of Visalia's fire. They suited me up, gave me a hose, filled it full of water, filled a building full of smoke, and put an ax in my left hand, the hose in my right hand, and said, "Now crawl and, and see if you can't find this firefighter this down." So it was an exhilarating experience. By the time we got out of the building, I think I'd lost 10 pounds of sweat. Couple things...
On second thought, maybe I will go.
I want to apologize to Supervisor Conway, knowing what we had in front of us here in our closed session. I rushed in to make a motion to approve the project in Poplar Cotton Center, that being in her district.
No, it's not my district.
Is it yours?
One of those guys down there.
Well, maybe I should have let you do it. I just kind of rushed in there.
I'm glad you did.
Last night, the City of Visalia voted to approve a 25, up to $25,000 amount to enhance a contract we have to add the east downtown Visalia area into the study area for possible locations for county facilities. I just wanted to make the board aware of that that vote did take place last night and was approved. I think Mr. Haddix will be working with them to add that scope of work.
Thank you. Supervisor Conway?
I think all I have is to mention once again, the partnership is starting again. I appreciate both of you being there. Looking forward to good work with the partnership moving forward. We had some seed, we'll be doing some seed grants to stimulate the economy in the eight Central Valley Counties. And I'm very honored and proud to serve as chair this time rather than... than co-chair. It's like a second full-time job, but that's okay. I have time on my hands. I was actually just forwarding an email. I probably don't have to now. My mother, on Friday, she told me she wouldn't go, but evidently, they're going to kidnap her. She's going to get her 40-year pin for working at Tulare District Hospital, which she still works full-time. That's really over 45 or plus. She had some children, so she took some time off in between. So now you all know why I'm the workaholic that I am. On that happy note, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. My report's a little bit lengthy here. I'm sorry that I am going to have to apologize to the public that I was not able to, to put together the State of the County address. Some of you know I not only have a day job, but I have a night job. And that night job started approximately January 11th, and ended right before we went to Washington, D.C. My night job is starting wind machines, as a farmer. So, and thank goodness, after, this is the third freeze I've experienced as a farmer, and at least this time, I had a day job. So I'm very thankful, the fact I also have a day job. In the time before we left for Washington, D.C., we received resolutions from seven of our neighboring counties in support of a pilot program, from the federal government to eradicate, to start a pilot program to eradicate marijuana. These counties start from Stanislaus National Forest, all the way down to the southern tip of the Sierra National Forest. So that includes Yosemite and Sequoia National Parks. We were able to get those Board of Supervisor resolutions, and we presented them to the proper people in Washington, D.C., and this was, what we quote, is "our invitation for them to come into our southern counties and start a federal task force on eradicating marijuana." So that was another part of our trip to Washington, D.C., and I believe we were successful. I know for a fact, last night, I was informed, Sequoia National Park received over a million two in additional funding for personnel. Not all of it will be law enforcement, but I imagine close to half of it will be law enforcement. We have yet to find out what happened in the National Forest and the B L M, but I believe from the hints we had when we were in Washington, that hopefully, there was additional funding for this marijuana effort. The other endeavor we were involved in before we left, yes, we received resolutions from the eight incorporated cities of Tulare County on our efforts to seek mitigation for the loss of surface water from the current, excuse me, from the San Joaquin River Settlement. And we presented those to our elected officials and to other agencies, which I believe were very effective, along with the presence of the city people that we had, that our electeds in the departments are taking a different look at the implementation legislation that was going forward. So hopefully, we were successful to, to at least identify the needs for the mitigation and how that mitigation effort may be solved. Last of all, I will be traveling to Jackson on Wednesday for a Sierra Nevada Conservancy meeting. And in our last news bulletin, we have $17,500,000 available for grant money for this year for projects in the areas east of Blue Oak Tree Line. So this includes 20, approximately 22 million acres of land is covered. So if we have projects in our foothill areas in Tulare County, I would suggest that we start working on grant applications. We will be initiating guidelines for the grant applications. So I want everyone to know, this is time to get in line to receive some of those grants. And other than that, that ends my report. And having counsel, I believe that we have need for closed session.
We do, Mr. Chairman. May I say, as the department head entrusted by your board to administer your workers' compensation program, I'm very supportive of none of you going through the firefighter's training. Thank you, and the workers' comp fund thanks you. We have items A through K on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you for attending.